What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're looking at. A bubble spot button versus big blind, so how do we play from the big blind? How does, actually we're looking at how do we change our strategy when we're on the bubble? When we're playing the big blind, let's get started. You wanna call this with a gunshot? A lower, no it's not even a gunshot, it's like.
But twenty bigs deep, are we?
Twenty big blinds deep, yeah, against the button. It's a god, it's actually a got shot.
I don't think so, well, I can't.
It's both hands, right? You could get nine ten, you could get a five.
That's right, double gutter.
I mean nine tens are better straight on board.
Nine ten also hits more of history in trade, so.
That's right, better straight on board.
How did you, uh, did the SIM adjusted, uh, I see him, how, how you managed to do this?
Yeah. So what I did was, uh, so. I added an ICM structure. And then there's seventeen paid eighteen players left, so very high ICM. With like short stacks, there's four big blinds, uh, five big blinds. We're middle stack with twenty big blind, we're facing a middle stack. And then they're shorter stacked than us. Then same as us, chip leader, second, third, and then, yeah.
Well, that's cool.
So I basically reran a bunch of sims and then. We can compare them to the actual chippy V, you see our changes.
Awesome. I think I would fault the gutter. I say, wise.
I'm folding here every time. Yeah.
Right, I thought was a four. And then, uh, let's look at this.
My ten beats already.
That's pretty, that's what I was thinking, like.
It'll be already dead.
Yeah.
Hmm. Interesting plus, ten four suited.
Yeah.
So first thing of notice is that. The villain is betting pretty big here, so he is not using the small size very much.
Uh, because of the board, I suppose, kinda, you know?
Yeah, he's sizing up a lot on this kind of board, even though we're in ICM. So see bets thirty six. Uh, this is gonna be our strategy against a bigger bet.
Hmm hmm.
So not much raising? And then, if we compare. Here. And then the board is. Jack, eight, seven. So a chippy V. Chippy V first off. So it's funny here because ICM is gonna use bigger sizes than chippy V.
Hmm.
So this is the chippy V, uh, without ICM basically on the right. And it's using the small size a lot, sometimes a big size, it's mixing, right? But when it comes to ICM, it really sizes up, doesn't use the small size anymore.
Second, ten percent less, so.
Louis, where on these charts does it say? Where does it say whose range it is on these charts? Cause I, I'll look at them and I.
Okay, but it's simple, okay? It's, you need to follow the stories here. Okay, the rule, and then the first player to act is the big blind. So that's the big blind strategy and he checks. So after he checks, this is imposition, so that's the button, that's his strategy, the same goes here. Right?
So, again, we're not using ICM adjusted ranges, right?
No, we're not. As you like to mention every time we do that.
I just wanted to double check, I got here late.
Uh.
This is.
Given you are the one who's supposed to give me the ICM range, I don't know why you keep.
Didn't tell me what to run, plus you have GTO wizard ICM, you could get ranges from that.
Yeah. So, on the right side, this is a chippy V solution. So we can already see that at chippy V, uh, we raise all in sometimes. We have, we, we raise, uh. We don't always raise small. Whereas raising all in here, uh, on ICM is a lot more rare. Also. Notice how we don't race top pair at ICM, right? Jack ten is not even raising all the time, okay? Chippy V, they're supposed to be raising jack ten every time you have it. Right, you're supposed to be digging in your jacks to be raising. Cause your twenty big blinds deep, it's top pair, blah, blah, blah. ICM top pair is just calling. You need like a two pair to be raising. Or like some, uh. Pretty strong hand, like top pair and then draw.
Hmm.
And then. You don't raise big very often anymore. So. Already like, we can see like our range with top pair shifts a lot on this section. We go from raising top pair a lot to. Just raising two pair, what's a ten four here? It's like just a pure draw?
Wonder why it's picking nine six to go nuts in ICM?
Yeah. Well, it's a popular combo in both scenarios, right?
Yeah.
It's really difficult to play when we're on the turn and, uh. Let's say a ten comes or a queen comes or an ace comes.
Yeah.
Uh, we're a little bit in the dark there, or I'm just the only one. Uh, we can call jack ten and the ace comes and then.
Then you reevaluate, whereas you raise it and the ace comes anyway, you're like, oh, you know?
Hmm, okay.
Okay. Jack eight deuce, well, not a great hand to start with, probably just gonna fold. But now let's think about. So you gotta call every deuce here?
Hmm, I'm not sure. If we fold even the highest, uh. Pair with the low bad kickers.
You're against the button.
But against ICM also. I agree with Maxi, I think. Deuce will not call.
I don't think you can fold the deuce here.
Being deuce, queen deuce has to call, right?
Every deuce in our range has to call one.
I look, I don't know.
So this one folds. Then let's see. Okay. So pair of deuces are calling.
Okay.
We only raise eight percent of the time. Let's give it a quick compare with the other solution. Jack, eight, oops. Alright. So let's see the betting strategy for imposition, hmm. So, uh, once again, he bets more often at ICM than he bets at chippy V. It must be in function of the button, but the button seems to be betting more often for that, from the two samples we've seen. Alright, so we bet. And then. Chippy V is raising a lot, look at this, twenty one percent raise. Versus eight percent raise, uh, at ICM. The kind of hand we're gonna wanna raise at chippy V top pair. All of our jacks are raising, whereas here our jacks are super resilient. Right, we don't raise much jacks.
And juices are calling everywhere, chippy V ICM, doesn't.
Yeah.
On ICM, two pair is just calling. And then chippy V. Two pairs raising, I know.
You mean, you mean the jacket?
The deuce eight.
Oh, the deuce eight.
And then the jack deuce.
Yeah.
Two pair, right?
Yeah.
Because you, you, you get to protect your range less at ICM. You just play more aggressive with strong hands.
Right.
I don't know why it likes five four here, anyone knows? Really likes five four, both at chippy V and ICM. I don't have much five fours here.
What suits? Everything but clubs.
Yeah, that's, that's the back door to the, to the straights. Or not, right?
Yeah, it, it's back. It's double backdoor straight draw. The five four connects with the eight and the two. And the backdoor flush draws.
And that's a far-fetched backdoor straight or backdoor flush, right?
Plus, it probably doesn't block any of his value or any of his folding range.
And then what, what's up with these?
Hello.
Oh, what's up, yes? How's it going?
Uh, good, I think I, I drop him for.
So for those that missed the beginning, I, I reran some sims. Uh, with this structure basically, so it's the stone bubble. We got seventeen paid and eighteen players left. This is ch- uh, stack distribution. We got some four big blinds, five big blind, then we have twenty big blinds here.
Yeah, those are things.
And then, yeah, there's some other middle stacks and then there's some bigs, one. Like it's a very, it should be like a really, really high risk, uh, premium for us. So, and then we compare. Uh, this one on the left is the solution with. The ICM payout, then on the right, the chippy V. And then we see like, for example, a jack seven is always raising at chippy V. But ICM, it's never raised.
Yeah, if you see the amount of raises, uh, for chippy V versus, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, we're raising three times more often at chippy V.
Yeah.
So a lot more calling. Alright. It's a new one, ten, 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 four, four, oh. We got a semi-good blocker hand, we know?
Nah. He checks that.
Yeah.
Fault, nothing we can do then.
That's just what it's gonna be.
Seven of spades is not that important.
Fault.
Okay, do you call with the hand like? Six, seven of hearts.
Sure, yeah, well. Maybe better raising cheaper with this hand.
I wonder if you call with, uh, uh, nine deuce or something like that?
Yeah, we call every deuce here. So. Six, seven of heart isn't raising, not really call.
More folding.
Never would find those ways.
It's funny, because at chippy V, it's fair folding.
Yeah. So it's, uh, very marginal, it's just, uh.
Yeah.
You have to find some.
You call a king I in here.
What about king queen?
Well, we can see this one in spade, for example.
Are we covered or is he covering us, actually?
Even stack.
Even stack, okay.
Uh. Did you ask if we had spades?
Yeah, if we have king minus B.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
You wanna call with king minus B?
Hey, I'm a space, I would. Yeah.
What? Why is the pot so large?
At least not fault.
Sorry, Joey.
I, I was doing something else and on the side and not really paying attention, but why is the pot so large?
It's not, it's half, it's half measures, like, so nineteen.
It's not big blinds, it's chips.
Yeah, it's chip, well, it's not even that, it's like, he did it so, one, uh, eighteen is one point eight, Joey.
So a king minus B has to continue.
Divided by ten.
Yeah, divided by ten, that's, thank you.
King, queen.
They also have a backdoor good shot and backdoor good shot, backdoor straight draw and off card.
All this spot.
Well, we need to call.
Okay, so. The big blind is ten here, ten dollars.
It's about nine point six chips, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
So we call every five here?
Every, every five, we call this five also.
I'm not happy to do it much, yeah, I think we. But the flush draw and the straight draw, I think that's around. But we have to.
We don't have.
Five on a jack ten board.
No, we don't, but the opponent could have.
Yeah, you can have anything, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, he's not betting big on this board, it's funny, because on jack eight. X, he was betting big, on jack ten, five, he doesn't bet that big. Like he just bets, think. Eighteen. And then he goes all in. Oh my goodness.
Yeah, you see that sometimes, huh, if, uh.
Yeah, that's the thing you see at chippy V.
I don't see any value. Uh, just ace jack. Everything else is.
Got two different board, oh, no.
Ace king, you get hurt when you do that kind of shenanigans.
Alright, yep.
Can basically, basically put a lot of pressure on, uh, any ten, for instance.
Ah, it's funny, it doesn't do that at chippy V at all.
No, of course not, yeah.
There's no, there's not as much pressure on chippy V.
Then why doesn't wanna go with like eight four off?
Because you have to have bluff, and this is, uh.
Off with the backdoor.
Double cutter.
Yeah, that's ambitious, I'm, I'm never finding that personally.
Probably need a spade or the forest spade, and, and does it?
Alright, alright, when we face a bet now. We call every five, at ICM.
Yeah, he's, when they have a range bet, I think we have to call all the bottom.
Yeah.
I think we.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to see if we start folding bottom pair when he starts having polarized bets. Or polarized range where he does a lot of checking.
So another texture basically? Or maybe against this, right? Say the card doesn't sit on you, what do you do with like a ten?
Fold.
And fold your tens, Josh?
Yeah, it depends on maybe what ten it is. Two space, of course not, ace ten, I don't know.
Against population, yes, against Louis, absolutely not.
Okay, call everything versus two.
He's calling some of the jacks.
You're not gonna be printing with your tens there when they die.
Yeah, if you have space, I would call indeed, otherwise.
Well, the jack nine folding, I don't think I pulled that ever in game.
Can't buy that take.
Against an all-in in this situation? Yeah, you bet.
You're on the bubble, right?
Yeah, on the bubble, and it's, um.
Like you're gonna make money if you fold.
And, uh, four big blind stacks and three big blind stacks, fold, man. Here's your money.
Yeah. That's what it means.
Band was the stack just. Yeah, it's hard to do, but, uh, still.
Uh-oh.
Uh. We're out, right?
Okay.
Story is.
Well.
Oh no.
There, okay.
What?
Wow, that's interesting, it doesn't like checking, it wants you to raise here?
No, it wants you to bluff.
Okay, why do it? You wanna bluff this king?
It went check, check.
And then you wanna lose your mind when I find.
The five's not, the five's no good anymore.
Yeah?
Hmm.
The five's not winning often enough, it might win every once in a while, but it's not winning often enough.
Alright, so, the one check check. This is out of position strategy. We bet one oh six a lot, we never go all in, that's funny. But we're, we're gonna bet one oh six?
Why's our hand not in there?
Because it's zero, 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 one percent or something like that.
Hmm.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's pot that you can't say it's, uh, that you did the wrong thing or not, I mean, it's just a. Fluke. But, so.
Where did it go, right? Falling to frequency? The seven, is it leading on the turn?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's just not happy about that.
Leading on the turn.
Yeah.
Leading on the turn, when, when the draw hits.
Yeah, the flush completes and we're just like, ha, ha.
We have.
And we have a draw, that's why.
Okay.
Yeah, we turned it into a bluff on the turn.
Bluff your stack off, uh, on the bubble. Good plan.
It's small.
Yeah, but also, i- if the opponent is supposed to bet.
So it's like we're playing with fire, but it's only matches, right? We can't really get burned here. For now. So the flush completes and we just take it and then.
Yeah, you have to have bluffs or not.
Is it really on a seven of?
Or at least you block some value adds with the five, I mean.
Why is it the bingo card?
Oh.
Nine eight.
We really hit the bingo card here, right? Well, we're leading a little bit on every speed.
Yeah, but the, the seven, eight, and nine, the seven, eight, and nine make more sense because they also complete the straights too.
Yeah, in this, in this situation, you block straight, that's why I suppose that more nines are betting than, uh, five nine. But maybe it's also because you have a pair also.
And bottom pair hitting, bottom pair pairing the turn, we bet more often than anything else.
Yeah, we see all the nines that are betting here, almost all nines are betting.
Okay.
Look at the nines, all betting, or at least a lot of them.
It feels like it's jack, a pair is betting a lot. And then.
Yeah, blocking, uh, draw, sure, blocking the.
Nine X and eight X, right, nine X and eight X.
Yeah.
Yeah, they blocked a straight.
And then this part here, ace four. You know, it's a flush, that's all the flush? Alright, or is it?
It's all flush.
Yeah.
Also, far as, nah, not all flush, that's a top pair, of course, jack.
Go over nine, five suited, make sure that it's all of them and not just, uh. Oh yeah, the five of spades on the board, we don't have.
Yeah.
The flush in that.
Yeah.
And we block a set. We block the straight.
You block two pair? If he has jack five at least then.
So let's see here.
What, what happens if we bet that? And he calls, do we double barrel the river?
Not a lot, probably.
Well, first off, you already see that this behavior here is like, what? Four X stronger at ICM? Right?
Yeah.
But this effect is magnified by four.
Villain is supposed to fault a lot, huh, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're not the only ones with ICM pressure, we can turn the pressure up on him.
Yeah, yeah, of course, that's the reason you can't do this. And he didn't bet, uh. So, yeah.
And then, or. Do we have the same good turns? Okay, so the five is, right?
And then the seven, eight, and nine of spades are in there. Just not as much as they were.
Nice. So we do a lot more, a lot more leads at ICM, wow.
I guess that we have a lot more flush draws, uh, flushes, uh, actually, yeah.
On this texture, let's see if it's true on other textures. Okay, so a five here, we're facing a final bet, the king, hmm, probably not good anymore with our.
Now we're folding, we can't, we don't have fold equity.
Oh my goodness.
Oh, he still wants to shove?
I was called.
Yeah, cheat amount of, uh. Dollar you get, two point five.
If it can call a river bet? Why does it bluff it? I thought we were bluffing because we can't call.
Well. Um. Is it because, uh, I, maybe the, not, then the nine doesn't block anything, I don't think we call every five, yeah, that's right. Like ace five is folding, queen five is folding, almost every fives are folding. Did we have, uh, one of, one of these here in the slivers, so. We shouldn't be here. You're not really calling what I find here, basically, that's the idea. Oh, we were right.
Oh, so we're calling with a five that blocks.
Yeah, it was just like, yeah, because we didn't leave, we make it there with the hair and then it doesn't care.
Is, is that one still up in the background? I wanted to see if we, if we barrel off on the river, we get called. After we bluff the turn.
Um. So it's here?
Yeah.
It's actually very good for this, uh, calling range, huh? King, queen, ace jack, ace queen.
So you wanna see? What, no?
Alright, we, we bet the turn.
We lead the turn.
Yeah, we need to turn, I think it goes small. And he calls.
And then the king.
What was it, the king of clubs or king of diamonds?
Diamonds.
And let's see if you bluff your five X. You do?
Yes, we double barrel.
Yes.
Not all in.
Small.
Idea to turn it was right, because it's not good anymore.
Yeah, but look at the, if you have betting.
The reasons why you wanted to turn it was one, it went check, check on the turn two, it's not good anymore, right?
And let's, let's suppose we bet this and what should he call with? So we take the spot there, we bluff? Can you look what, what they should call it?
So one other thing, I didn't pay attention, it's always small. We're never really risking your R stack, no matter what.
Only if you have it.
So he's calling with. A whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, it's also folding a whole bunch of stuff, ace five, for instance.
He's folding a lot of tens.
Called better fives.
He's calling a lot of tens.
Ace ten, queen ten.
So the only thing we, we, we get there is get better aces off, better five, five X hands over, uh. Of, uh, of the hand.
Yeah, some queens have.
Uh, we get some tens off, we get some sevens off.
Yeah.
We get pocket queens to fold. Pocket nines, pocket eights, pocket sixes.
And we block uh jack five and fives. And nine eight.
Yeah, we're never getting a jack off.
Yeah, okay, but yeah.
We're never getting a jack to fold.
Yeah, for that sizing, it's. I'll also not folding, probably nobody will fold the jack.
Yeah, but jack six is folding.
Jack six, yeah.
Yeah, the smallest one, but like.
Population folds jack six though.
But partially falls, yeah, but it doesn't fall completely, partially falls.
Yeah.
So.
But even the ace jack is folding some. I mean, so we even get some jacks to fold.
Well, like the word is the ace, right? After that is the queen.
Yeah, but uh king eight is raising us. As this uh green eight.
Well, if we get raised.
Let's pace.
If we get raised, it's an easy fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if bluff raises us, then uh. You lost uh.
Yeah, but I don't think they love enough in that uh, that spot. On the bubble.
But uh then again, population probably arrives stronger at the river.
Yeah, my instinct was the bluffs, I'm, I'm. Glad that I was right on that.
Ooh, a big bet. I wanted to raise, the one raise anyway.
Uh, you too?
No, I think we fold to that size.
Yeah.
And we fold.
We have double, I mean, have a back uh.
Maybe against this last chance, I just call. Big sizing, we're relatively short. The bubble.
Fifty-five percent in ICM is like seventy-five percent or more in Chippy V. If he bet seventy-five percent here in Chippy V, would you fold?
Yeah.
Stack size maybe, yes.
I would raise.
You, you're not drawing to a hand that can turn the nuts, you're drawing to a draw. You can't, can't hit a big raise with that.
I have a lot of backdoor in it.
It's just a fold?
Just a fold.
Ace high, we overfold.
Remember, it's hard to defend backdoors against ace high boards.
Especially if you're not deep stacked.
I wanted to raise a lot.
We're here to save you, Louis.
Stay away from the light.
Deuce of diamonds, do you raise, Joey?
What hand did you say?
King deuce of diamonds. No, I guess not.
No, fold.
No, and, and you can see like in ICM, there's just not a lot of raising here.
Okay. Then, let's compare. Ace, then three? Whoa, 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 no turn. Okay. So is there a difference for in position? Not so much.
Not really.
He bets small, he bets bigger. Oh my goodness.
Is the top one the ICM?
Yeah.
So he bets larger more often.
Yeah, that's the button, right? The button seems to be betting bigger every time.
He has a raise advantage, or uh, he can put a lot of pressure.
Yeah, every sim we've looked at so far, the button is sizing up at ICM.
In, in Chippy V, a double Broadway board, we usually do start. Increasing the bets.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway, no checking here, that's right, so we bet a lot, so thirty-six, thirty-six.
Reasonable similar. Differences, but that can also be uh due to uh. There are trees falling on the left side, not on the right side. That's the big difference.
Observe aces.
King three, queen three.
So interesting, yeah.
Our two pairs are getting more.
Like bottom, bottom pair is mixing, right? It's of, it's folding already, to the, just the one bet on the flat.
Yeah, I'll, I'll shoot the trees are falling, actually, on the left side.
Yeah, this is one of the spots I asked about, when the, when the button gets to start betting larger with more hands. We should have to start betting that, folding the bottom pair.
Yeah, you gotta mix, right? And then at ICM, gotta mix a lot.
I think I saw the bird, he says like in ICM, we're not allowed to bluff catch. So maybe that's something to do with it, that we cannot call, like we, in Chippy V, we call the lower pair. But in this spot, we cannot, because we're not able to, to bluff catch, because you can barrel off on the turn. Would be my approximation.
Yeah, you even faulted some uh king jack uh often, uh queen jack off.
I think that advice was more meant for river bluffs.
No, it's for all uh bluffs.
I thought for all, all, all ICM starts.
It's also on the flop on turn. Look at uh king jack and uh queen jack off, they're already folding a bit.
Alright.
Probably if you don't have one of the suits.
Yeah. I could four, I don't know, it's four deuce. Just a four?
Easy fold.
Would you call a nine, ten of diamonds or?
Of course.
If you actually use the same ranges? Yeah, I think so, or not? Three flop, I mean.
Yeah. Would you raise ten queen of diamonds?
Yeah, do I see, okay. Probably in ICM, you fault even more.
Not gonna be much raising.
Even call with the clubs.
Okay, king, jack, eight. King, jack, eight. Facing a small bet. Again and again, we see top pair not behaving the same.
Yeah, you don't want to go broke, huh? So yeah, worst top pair are not uh. But look at the, the, the ten fours and ten three and ten deuce.
Yeah, do we ever get nuts with these raises? I think not, it's just a bluff, isn't it? We cannot get uh nuts by this. We just raise and if he calls, we shut down, or what, what we're gonna do?
Good question.
Yeah.
So say we raise one hundred.
I think if you uh run into backdoors, then uh you uh continue, otherwise not.
Yeah, queen.
Same uh, same principle, I think, as uh with Chippy V.
Alright, let's put the diamonds.
Yeah, I'm still betting.
Are still betting, everyone. Yeah, but that's a four, that's not the. Ten three, certainly diamonds.
Betting.
But ten five is betting, is that?
So we see, the, those that are raising hundred. They pick up equity on the turn. If you turn your backdoor, they're going with it.
You're betting small, or what, what was the size? You cannot back with.
Probably what your range wants to bet on.
The four spade. You just have uh non-end size left, basically. Alright, a pair of eight. How?
Easy call.
Easy call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even have a spade.
Okay. How far do we call? Oh my goodness.
I think we.
Ace is bad. Already mixing thing. Or fold and call.
At least, it's still clean out, and a five also, but uh.
So we just mark?
Make small loss if you call.
And then? Do you need to call any fives there after this double barrel?
Fives? Fives, which you mean, no.
Why are we calling fives?
You mean, all the five? What do you mean?
Uh, no, I mean eights.
It's uh.
Or like a pocket five, something like that. No pocket pairs.
Or pairs are even folding more, I think.
I think eights might mix a bit.
Oh, eights are gone.
They're, they're, yeah, they're mixing a bit. Depending on what the.
All sliver is still calling.
What suits are in the offsuit? What suits are calling?
Uh, is it the eating a lot? You ask, Joey, for what suit?
Yeah, in the offsuit, eights. Oh wait, I'm sorry, suited eights.
Yeah, suited this page and offsuit, what's king eight off?
The spade.
Also a space, so you can bluff uh if you. It's a bit common.
Oh. Yeah.
Especially if the king, actually.
I see. Okay, a jack, maybe we can.
Call.
Or raise without.
This, this part we saw, Maxi, where at Chippie V, you always raise.
Oh, yeah.
Major very often, jack ten five.
Yeah, I think we just don't raise for thin value.
Look at this majority raise here. And then here, we don't raise at all.
This is the difference.
Oh, now that we hit two pair, what are we gonna do? Oh, he checks back for.
Go back, do we have any leads on the seven of diamonds?
Uh.
Was it complete to straight?
We do.
Yeah, some, but uh, oh, but uh, actually. Fifty percent.
Seven is always a great card for the big line, right?
Yeah. It completes the straight.
Alright, let's have a look. On the turn, he wrote checks, but. The seven is so amazing. Okay, not that good this time, but if it was a spade, we would go, wow.
Yeah, it's still uh thirty-two percent leading.
That's a lot, that's a lot in myself.
Hey, with jack seven, that's a hand you wanna lead.
Yeah, at least uh. Two perks or something like that.
And then look at that difference. Chippie V, the seven, you're just like, yeah, okay. Six percent betting. You're thirty-two percent. You're just like, oh, it's a seven.
Yeah.
You fold more, so you have a stronger range if uh. Draw it.
Yeah, and there's more dunking in um ICM than there is Chippy V.
Yeah, you also don't want him to polarize turn a lot. Right, our hand does want him to polarize turn, but.
So most of your jacks are betting on the turn. They're not raising a flop, but they're bet, check call, bet turn, lead turn. This is so annoying.
Yeah, but that's uh.
You become damn key, I said, to annoy people.
Alright. So. We should have been leading a lot on the seven. Now, the six.
So we went check, check now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we bet, but I don't know how large.
Eighty-six.
I think that's.
No, no, check.
Yeah, is this too greedy?
Yeah.
When we get raised, we're fucked. In myself.
And we fold.
I'm prepared to check call, we are two pair.
Uh, hmm, check calling are two pair.
No.
I like it back.
Not after check, check. I don't wanna lose value.
Minimum.
Yeah, I fe- I feel like in Chippy V, we could go eighty-six. But in ICM, I always like bring my down, bet down like one sizing.
Alright, let's explore. The Chippie V sim. Six of diamonds. Oh my goodness, the big bad sizes, look at that. Jack seven here is just stuffing.
Ripping.
Nothing all in, you mean?
But this is without ICM.
Oh, okay, yeah. With. And with ICM?
So eighty-six might be, when we look at that, eighty-six might be good.
Oh. Alright, alright, that's right. Eighty-six, no good.
No, we're still at fifty-eight, I should stop.
No.
No, one oh six.
It's one oh.
Even better.
They are very small.
Yeah, swat to induce a three bet maybe.
Yeah, also to protect that range, you need against uh races.
Yeah, also, yeah.
And you can bet a ten also, uh.
Okay, so the, basically, the third was one oh six, right?
Eighty-six was the only.
Yeah, but look, look at the difference.
No frequency.
No EV differences uh between the beds, huh?
And also, look, we never checked.
Yeah.
So I don't mind.
Yeah.
Because I checked the turn, so you know, you check.
Alright.
Yeah, we're out.
Yeah, if you check fold.
Do you call if you have like the nine of spades?
Only the nine of spades now.
Well, alright.
I wouldn't, at least. Someone said that, that backdoors uh are folding or.
I, I, I added this board myself.
Lead?
We have some leads here, I don't think it, I don't think we do it with this hand, no.
Uh, we have a draw, and overcard. And if then, if you lead and a jack comes, then probably our jack is good, otherwise, it's uh, you're rubbish.
Yeah, but we have the dummy end of a, we would need a four liner to hit the straight, and we have the dummy end. I don't think that's too good of a draw.
It's pretty bad, but if we think about it, everything seems to be magnified here. So our leading range is probably magnified here, maybe?
You, i- if you wanna lead here, you wanna have a spade blocking his continues. You don't wanna lead small, unblocking his continues here.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. Do we or do we not wanna spin it?
Yeah.
Jack of spades, three of hearts.
Uh, with my bluffs.
Or.
Yeah.
I think an eight or nine would lead. Spades. Obviously, sevens would, maybe some.
You guys don't wanna leave here because we don't have a spade. I would leave anyway.
Yeah, I think checking, yeah, I should probably.
Oh.
Uh, we're leading now.
Did we lead or not?
No lead.
Oh.
No lead in range?
See if it leads with the jack of spades.
Jack of spade only, you guys were right, we made a spade.
Yeah, and jack of spades, three of hearts, loves it. So.
And jack of hearts, three of spades, also raising a bit.
So you really, really wanna, it's, you really wanna block his continues, and that's the reason, eh?
Yeah, 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 so blocking continues is also.
I don't know if you guys see here, but we're mostly leaving.
Yeah. Oh, I knew that would be the situation, just not with our combo.
All the eights, all the nines, all the single spades.
Ooh.
Not all the single spacer, all single uh overcard space, probably.
A very different strategy here.
Yeah, but you know.
We, we just leave jam, you know that?
The frequency of leading is identical, though, pretty much.
Yeah. But the size, it's very different. You see the motion here, basically. You don't use big size when you lead at all, you just bet small.
Yeah, but yeah. I think small is already putting a lot of pressure.
Okay, well, check.
Player doesn't know.
The five pair, it's pretty good for us, no? The five pair, it's pretty good for us, no?
Depends, if the five a lot, then it's not good.
In T P V, I would go sixty six.
Yeah.
Would be a hand to check back a lot here, so I would probably go fifty four.
Yeah, I might even go thirty six, I mean. It's a I C M, so.
Yeah, I would go thirty. Myself as well.
So thirty six, you're just pricing in too many draws?
Eight checks a hundred.
He's supposed to fault a lot of draws, huh?
Not supposed to lead.
Can I? Better jacks.
Like, if you look at the E V, the bigger you lead, the more E V you lose. And then it's probably a thing like, it's just our hand, right?
Yeah.
Cause I think the range is gonna do it. Yeah.
Anything. Except if you're three, four, three.
Still need a spade.
Uh, yeah, now space is racial relevant.
And and Louis is right, there's no big bets here.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots of spades, lots of hearts.
So we call one?
Yeah, we call it.
Yeah.
Do you call every deuce full frequency?
Yeah.
Ace deuce maybe?
You fold all the deuces that are a club.
Not full frequency, but there are. All the deuces are in there at some frequency, I think.
I think if it was king ten, we might mix, but this dry, we call every deuce full frequency, that's my guess.
Alright, I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, we're still gonna overfold on king boards, so I think it's gonna fold some deuce of clubs combos. At like. Nine deuce of clubs. And I would definitely pull too tight here.
See.
I I would do, I would do the same, I probably also.
He has the king. We'd be folding some fives.
I think I'm just too tight pre-flop here.
But.
Yeah, but these are not uh. Ranges, are we, I'm uh, am I correct?
I'm sorry, yes.
The pre-flop ranges are from the T P V, not from the I C M.
That's correct, because we wanna see the one for one effect.
Yeah.
I see, okay, that makes more sense.
Louis, on the king ten. I think if we go back one node, we'll find out that the button shouldn't be betting small. Very often on that board.
Uh, only small?
Still does.
I C M. That's also what uh Giraffe says a lot, huh, you can just bet small, small, and then uh decide on the river how big we want to go. Yeah.
So we call a six? A deuce pair, do we do something? We'll have a six.
Yes, we're gonna have hands that do something. But is middle pair the hand you wanna do? Turn into a bluff.
Yeah, you want to. Now, I still have. Uh, I would bet small. Now, we still have a pair, so we don't have to bluff, so this could just be strong enough, I think.
I don't think we're leading necessarily as a bluff, but it would be more like a protection, block bet type.
Do we lead with the six?
He's supposed to bet that flop, I think, a lot or not.
Uh, yeah.
Those ranges should be probably pretty weak, so I would bet.
We did that.
Oh, you did that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then I'll probably check. Blocking small? Yeah, betting smaller. On the river, I mean.
River is gonna check back.
It mixes the sixes. But it is, it is turning some of them into leads.
Yeah, especially the low ones, actually. Six five, six four, six three.
So we're supposed to be betting eighty percent of the range.
Yeah.
If there's six pairs, is it the same thing? No, it's really the deuce.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, but that's pairing the board, the six is less maybe indeed, but uh.
Also, especially the deuce of clubs breaking all the backdoors.
Yeah, we see the same thing on the six of clubs.
Yeah.
It bets more than the other sixes.
Cause you break their backdoors. So when the backdoor is brick. And the small card pair.
I think uh, yeah, just pair board has also and then breaks.
Yeah. Okay, so when check, check on the turn, do we bet with the six now?
Yeah, small.
Yeah.
Yeah, small. Twenty nine?
I want a call from an ace.
Yeah.
I don't know about betting here, I would, yeah.
It's checking.
Do we bet any six here? I don't think so.
That, that throws me, we bet it on the turn, but not the river, after it goes check, check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are actually not protecting.
Because the deuce pairs, right, so we're just bluffing it up.
If we can bet a lot, so we can also bet the six then, because he's not uh supposed to have uh.
Not betting any sixes.
Okay.
Oh, we're not tall.
Maybe a bluff catching with sixes then, that's the reason, maybe.
So, a lot of questions here. The seven. We don't lead on a seven?
Yeah, now you can fold.
Do you call the three S P? If you have it.
No, I wouldn't. Not the nice Emerald.
I see you have ace with the the three S P.
Ace is a two, so also five can be good, then nice.
Yeah. Or a side.
Yeah. Then it's call probably. Then I would call. You don't have an ace of three of uh. You don't have the offsuit ace. Ace five then. King of the spare special, or you even raise, man.
Raising.
Yeah, but that's the king of spades, huh, king of spades, mostly.
Yeah. A pair and a. Oh, it's not even a pair.
Oh wait, this is. This is still in the turn.
Yeah.
Was the uh ace five off doing uh, okay, yeah, okay, doesn't matter.
I don't think it's raising.
Yeah, some, but it's also the ace, the spade is raising.
Eh, it is.
It's a double cutter, actually, the five. Oh, we have a heart.
Oh, fold.
Okay, and then. What do you do with pocket six with the six of hearts?
Go.
I'd prefer to have this.
No, seven, five, I would prefer, but not uh.
Well, yeah.
If the flush completes on the turn, like say the seven of heart comes on the turn, do we lead a lot with range?
Yes.
Do we call here?
I don't know, T P V, I I wouldn't fold this, but I'm not sure.
T P V, I would fault is also. Those stacks are not deep enough.
Okay, so as soon as the flush completes, we can lead small with a whole bunch of stuff. Especially.
Really, lead a lot more in I C M on the turn than T P V knows than errors.
Yeah. Definitely, seems to be leading turns a lot more, right?
Yeah, but you must then also fault flop uh more.
Yeah.
Otherwise you can't lead.
Okay.
What a shitty hand, I have the goal, but uh.
Four.
Do we lead on a five?
Yeah, we do have.
If we had a spade, maybe, but I don't think now.
You think?
If the queen of spades and a deuce, yes, I would lead maybe, but uh. No.
Let's.
At least then we can bluff on a spade, but uh now uh.
We saw some leads with middle pair, why not bottom pair?
So a little straight card comes, you can lead a little bit.
Yeah, we don't lead with queen deuce off.
But notice in this one, we're, we're checking all of our mi- second pairs too. The other one, we were betting it a lot.
Yeah, we don't have as many bluffs here, so we don't have as many value bets.
You mean, we don't have as many value bets, so we don't have as many bluffs?
Yeah.
Suppose, okay. Yeah, if the board pairs, the board is better for us, and now it's uh. Well, we do, yeah. Get our value from it.
I think we fold now.
Okay, so we fold, but say we have a hand like king seven.
In game, I fold king seven, I guess, against.
On the bubble.
Population. Yeah, I guess population depends on the.
Are you supposed to fold?
I think king four and king three are better.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they block the straights.
And we have a card. And they can uh turn a not hand.
Ah.
Or a river in that hand.
So we see the back blockers here. And eight and nine. A ten a little bit.
Kings have an office calling mostly, but uh.
Yeah. But it's getting more. It's pure when it's king five and lower.
Yeah.
Or is there?
Because of a straight interaction too.
Yeah, what about the river, if we call with the, our kings, and he still bets the river? How do we call it, the same amount of the kings?
A king seven?
Yeah, for example, king with the lower kick on.
What is the river card?
Hmm, the brick.
We didn't make.
There's a brick on this board.
Yeah, what's a brick?
Yeah, no, it's not that easy, yeah, for it, I would say deuce is a brick, actually, but.
Three.
A three is not a brick, cause then.
No, yeah, with the five interaction.
A three is the opposite of a brick, it gets, puts a four liner on the.
I would say a deuce. Jack ten.
A nine or a ten.
Yeah, uh, nine is seven, eight is.
Ten, ten, yeah, ten.
First ten, jack, maybe a deuce.
Okay, let's try with ten, just good.
I think a deuce is also pretty very good.
Oh. You are supposed to fold some top pairs to that way.
Yeah, you see that they are uh, uh, I call it indifferent.
Yeah.
Unless you have better than uh, king jack or better.
You're calling more with the offsuit sixes. Than the kings.
Yeah, it's set, huh? Oh, you mean offsuit six, okay, yeah, yeah. Uh, blocking is set? I don't know. Yeah. For the king, you broke also a set of kings, yeah, I know. Yeah, but he's maybe supposed to have in this line more sixes, I mean, yeah, he broke five. That's strange. Strange, yeah, but sometimes it's just uh, it's a review also. It's just a blocker type of thing that uh no one can reproduce.
So if it's in in the solar, it's indifferent than in the real life.
Definitely fold. But you can't fold all your kings, right?
Yeah, unless you're a maniac, you fold.
Okay, we're gonna call a six. The four comes.
So we can lead here? We'll lead a lot.
Can we?
If like, based on the previous examples, we'll lead a lot on this.
So we could probably lead, but.
There wasn't a lot of leading.
There's not a lot leading, yeah, only if the board pairs, you can lead a lot.
A low straight card as well, we could.
Yeah, you can lead, but not a lot.
Because the only, we only had, well, we have all the three fives, so.
Yeah, they also have a lot of other cards.
But what allows us to lead here? So it's having a five? Here?
We're blocking straights.
Or three.
Walking continuation.
We have five or seven.
Yeah. Or perhaps.
Five, seven, oh, it makes sense. So we have Jack six, we can do it, but.
After some, maybe it's hard, or Murphy hearts, I don't know.
We wouldn't be here with Jack seven, that's the thing, right? Alright. So check. Do we call a second barrel?
No hearts.
Very, very small.
Like this, I think, yes.
I would fold.
In reality. It doesn't have any force in the range.
I'm too needy. But it's close.
Even on the bubble, you call. But it's small, right? And then the four comes, are we gonna bet fall?
Uh, no.
No.
The four. He never folds a king against this, but.
I.
We don't have a four, Louis, yeah, it's not a.
What's different here is that we have no fours. We don't have that many fours on the flop.
Plus, you don't have to turn your six into a bluff.
It, I think if the two paired, we might get.
It's it's a decent bluff, because.
We have a, we have a four, king, four, five, four, probably. With some backdoor flashes.
Yeah, but that's not a lot.
No, but I mean, we have some fours, but we don't have to target into a bluff anyhow, because we have a six.
The four pairing is not.
We're not leading, king four leads, that's it.
I think if the two pairs, something that was on, that we'd still be in hand on the flop.
Yeah, uh.
It make, it might, we might have a bit more leading.
Not really.
With six pairs?
A little bit more, but.
We have more sixes than deuces, huh?
Yeah, I think maybe the ri- river pairing is not as valuable as the turn pairing.
Yeah, you can look at the six, it's uh.
Ah, that works.
We have more sixes than deuces, man.
Oh, nah. And eight here. With the backdoor, we gotta call, right?
Yeah, for sure, I'm folding, no, not forward now.
Do we have any raises on this one?
Yeah, we must. Louis.
What's exact set?
Maybe not.
General.
You know, if you have like queen jack? What do you do if you do have ace, jack here?
It's king, it's queen.
It's king, you wanna cry? You don't have a skin, cause you put it in his face before that.
Yeah, that's true.
But ace, jack.
Check, please.
I don't think we have many ace jacks in range either, though.
There's lack of equity, right?
Yeah.
And it could change, so we probably just call it a lot, right? Am I wrong?
No, I don't think you're wrong.
Wanna peek at the chip V just to.
I wonder if you're gonna, I wonder if you're gonna raise Queen Jack more than Ace Jack here. Having the straight blocker being more important.
Right.
With the space.
We don't have Ace Jack in range that much, so.
No, we don't.
Well, not in Chippy V at all. But I would still three bet or shove Ace Jack pre-flop.
Alright, so King Jack or Queen Jack, who wants to raise?
Sizing up with the Queen Jack and.
And then. Okay, so as I kind of figured out a little bit, we don't do much raising, unless we lacked it, we have it.
Look how much it's folding, it's calling eight two more than nine two. What's going on there?
Have a good shot?
Nine's a pair.
Now you have an open end of a red knight.
Well, bottom pair doesn't seem to be as valuable on locked up equity board.
Same. It looks weird, it's like.
Not for me, no.
The nine five to nine two, it's probably only spades.
Also in ICM, well, you won't have.
Has to be diamonds, diamonds.
So your draw has more EV than the, which EV the nines? Barely anything. Look how much more an eight is. No, it's not that much more, the other spades is a ton.
Yeah, there's eight of, eight uh space of cards in the in the.
So we raise what? Ten percent less? We fold about the same frequency, right? But instead of raising, we call. Okay, and then. A Queen four of hearts here could be raising. Ah, I don't have much Queen four of hearts here, what about you guys? It's a queen, right, but, I don't know. Okay, so eights are what, calling?
Yeah.
Are raising.
Hmm, that's a horrible card and a good card at the same time.
Is it good, is it bad? Who knows?
Well, we now have a. We have a flush draw, and since the ace of diamonds is out. That reduces a lot of his potential flush draws. Because most of his flush draws would have been the suited aces. With diamonds.
Feels like it's still a call. Alright?
Yeah.
Maybe raise sometimes.
Oh my goodness, I didn't think we were gonna go for it.
Very much very sometimes.
It's shoving?
It's shoving every time on that time. It's an ace, he's not gonna fold a pair.
I thought an ace was too good for his range that we.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he he bet uh flop, huh? So how many aces does he have? When he bets the flop?
Got Ace Jack, Ace ten, Ace nine, Ace Queen.
Yeah, but does he have Ace four, Ace? He has a weak. Five, Ace four, Ace three, Ace twos.
Uh, yeah, probably with spades or diamonds.
Yeah, but the diamond ace is there, so he doesn't have that anymore.
So the weak spades probably bet. Maybe not, they might.
Yeah, but that that's not a lot, huh?
No, but it's.
And does she now bet the turn with uh spades?
I think we're just jamming because we have so much equity.
Yeah, but also maybe the, I I don't know how many uh.
And you're gonna get it, saying you're gonna get pairs to fall, he's gonna fold like worse pairs than an ace.
Let's look at his.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Then it's how many aces does he have, is the question.
Okay, so it's a low frequency play, right?
Uh, can you see what the 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 other player is doing uh with his ace?
Will we do that?
On the turn? Have we checked, what does he do with his aces?
No, that's us.
He's ranging that turn.
Uh, you make the weights proportional. Uh, he's got a ton of aces.
Yeah.
Alright, so he's range betting almost, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, the aces. The ace is the greatest card to blow.
Yeah, he doesn't have a ton of aces, because Ace six to Ace twos is probably jamming uh. P flop.
Yeah, that's just that.
That's suited. The three play cardboard is just really good for him, right?
Do we open shove?
It doesn't have.
We've had fifty-four, I think.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, we can't shove, because ICM, right?
I can't call it.
It's perfect enough.
Anything. Eight six.
Woo, what are we gonna do? Call?
In PP, I would like to raise, but that's my CM. Yeah. But the fake reactor just. I only played cash game on the big blind deep, so I raise. Not now.
Wanna raise more with the heart in your hand or without? Do you raise more at ICM or at GPPV?
More with the heart you raise, I think.
Yeah. And in ICM, we will raise best. He bets, that that's that's awful, huh, on this spot. Yeah.
So it's six off here. You need a heart at GPPV. And it's raising with the heart kind of frequently. Here.
And you face less damage.
Okay. So say it's raising at GPPV. The effect is gonna be magnified, so it's gonna be raising even more.
We couldn't, we couldn't see it, but uh, what, how often is he betting small on this flop?
Not, not so often.
Yeah. So I thought.
Okay, so. I say we can check raise more.
You don't have a heart.
That was a mistake.
Yeah, I mean, you just looked at the solution.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe against population, it's okay.
Six, it's raising a lot.
Need a heart.
You need a heart.
Yeah.
Look at this, it's not raising anymore. Look at the raising range of the dumpster, boom.
Uh, what if he raises the right size, thirty-six or two, whatever it was?
You mean, what if he, that's the right size?
Let's see.
Or then you raise even less.
He was betting the right size.
Oh, ICM, this is the ICM?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see he is four.
Yeah, it's just like. Still just call. I'm raised half, half as often, makes sense.
Even less.
Yeah, it's about, well, you bet twice as much, so you bet, you raise twice as less. Chippy V, you got jams, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, you're only twenty big buttons deeper, so you have jams.
And then look at the hand like Jack seven on GPPV for call. At ICM, not so much. Strong hands, ICM, you just play.
I want to get paid now.
Yeah. Let's lock it up, pack it up before the ace comes.
Don't want him to have any opportunity to out.
Raised, that was not good, now he jams, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna pack down?
Yeah, fold.
We just, we got eight outs, right?
Fold.
You you turned your hand into a bluff, it's time to fold.
Hmm.
Back off your backs.
Yeah, calling was spending here.
So, you're gonna have some combo draws, like the straight flush, that's gonna have to get it in, so.
Yeah, but even then, probably you don't raise uh as much uh with ICM than without ICM.
For sure you don't.
Yeah, just fold it.
Oh.
Check fold.
So, Chippy V, you probably can't fold that.
This?
Yeah, to a small bet.
Yeah.
All here at Chippy V, yeah?
Think so.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think I would make that.
Maybe with the eight of hearts, but uh not with uh the club.
Holding. Okay, a low pair board. Can we lead here?
Hmm, do we lead a lot from the pair board?
I don't.
We have a card, we have both uh pairs, so, we don't have sets. Yeah, for the five, of course, but.
He's got a decent amount of fives too, right, and sevens, so.
And sevens, and seven, seven, and eight, eight, and nine, nine, and ten, ten.
I still wanna check raise.
I would, I want Jack call.
So more check raises than actual don'ts.
Oh, look at that.
Seventy-seven percent donkey. Hmm.
Strange. We can add the six for for the straight. We have not advantage.
Look at that.
You have two off cards to the seven and a good shot, so you could say. Yeah. Plus another advantage, we have more fives, I think.
Yeah, well, it's raising fifty, it's leading fifty-seven percent of the range roughly, so it's not just that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you can lead range a lot, and this is one of the candidates, neat, yeah, I can understand that.
So the five, right?
Yeah, but this is nine, nine, eight with a heart, huh?
Yeah.
What's nine, eight with the club doing? Yeah, same.
The two listen Chippy V as well.
Now, I don't think it's.
I I wouldn't be.
A little bit, a little bit, but a lot less.
You raised bigger.
Chippy V is going big.
And less.
And less. Yeah. ICM?
Yeah, ICM, you can bet smaller and uh get false, huh, than.
More often. So everything is magnified and. The sizings are down.
Yeah, because small sizing is uh putting a lot of pressure on.
But. Sizings are up for the button. So everything is magnified, basically. Like, Chippy V, I think the button is betting small, sixty percent here, say we check, the button is betting. Only forty percent.
It's still magnified, just here, he just wants to check a lot more than bet. Still magnified.
Yeah.
The check effect.
To define what magnified is, huh? Why she can't say, yeah, it's magnified.
At ten, we lead on a ten, not really, right?
Yeah, the one good or not.
With a diamond, maybe, the nine of diamonds, maybe.
Can, check, check, we get a gut, or do we bet?
Like I said, if I had the diamond in my hand, maybe, so I could try to, but I don't even know, I guess I would have to keep bluffing diamonds if I had a diamond in my hand. It's not the best combo, but yeah, like, I think you gotta go for it sometimes.
I would go small.
We got fives in our range, so, yeah.
Oh, you can even go without diamonds.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess, because we just have way more fives now when they check.
Have an open ender.
Okay, so now we check, he bets, do we call, do we raise?
You have the odds to call, so I would probably just call.
Just call, you say?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
His bet was small, so we.
I check.
Yay.
A church? Hmm. Another seven, five, five.
Old.
What do you do, Ken, with King six of hearts? On the bubble.
Raise.
Bonk lead.
Yeah, there you go, we just saw it, eighty percent of the range. I come in and lead.
So can we check raise with the King six of hearts?
Wobs only.
It really only leads and it doesn't care now, so.
Don't have six of fives anymore, because we lead.
So where's right, just don't lead with it. So we fold this one?
Yeah. It's a big lead, so I fold.
I would fold it anyway, even though it's small bit.
Yeah, probably.
So this is gonna have to do something.
Straight draws. And a good shot.
What do you think it does?
I think it would either check raise or call, I don't know the difference between the ICM and the whatever, but it's gonna do something.
Now we're leading.
Well.
With this hand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not leading, I would lead if I had spade.
Why this hand?
We.
We don't have that.
We have a lot of leaves, I said, that I agree, but uh.
We have a good card to bluff, and we only have ten high.
We lack the twos, we don't have six two, we don't have twos much. We have some King two, I guess, we have some Kings, but like. I would do, I would lead with spades and foldies.
I'm leading. Just don't know the size, let's go small. Oh, it was thirty-six.
Or check.
Or check.
Or checking, actually. You you can't bluff uh. Uh, you can't say, I don't have anything, so I uh, I bluff, I mean, that's.
Well, the.
Then then you overbluff in this spot.
The server was doing it thirty percent of the time.
Yeah, but that's not a lot.
It's it's. Doing with the back door with the spades.
It isn't the amount, but if you do it always, then you overbluff, of course.
No, I'm not saying.
Major front door.
Yeah, okay.
You have to recognize the hands where you do have potential buffs. And then it's an opponent dependent, do I bluff this opponent?
Lock them all like God sort of amount.
Now, the six game. Which one is the best, the two or the six?
The six is bad, because now he has uh.
I'm bluffing now.
Eighty-six, right?
Hmm. Better six on the turn, that's the question, actually.
Now we can play the board and we only lose to eight.
How about one oh six?
Did we bluff with the six on the? Or bet with the six on the flop?
It's just ninety-six in the box.
I would check our half, half pot.
We, if we check, we beat all of his. Non-pair hands. What does he, I don't think he has too many non-paired hands, so.
All I'm gonna say is if we bet here, I think it's gonna be big.
I'm with Ken here. I just don't know between eighty-six or one oh six. He says one oh six.
I'm toward between one oh six and one seventy-four.
I mean.
It's ICM, Ken, you can't punt it off. Alright, so that's off the limit.
That's an ice champion time. Chip EV is probably okay, but uh.
Get extra points for that.
It's gonna be. The one oh six or eighty-six at best.
It was the point.
I say eighty-six.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
No?
Ken was right. It's only.
No, it's one oh six.
Only one oh six. Why do you pick one oh six, Ken?
Well, cuz like, I don't know if this is right or not, but I just feel like the way this played out, we just have way, 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 way more six exit range.
Check, check. Bet, call.
Uh, not if you bet ten seven on the turn every time.
Let's see how many sixes they have in the range. Compared to us, that's the best way to do it.
Well, it's not, it's not even that. Our hand has no value. But what I would say.
Well, you have to have value to bluff. So you gotta find your value first. If you have.
Yeah.
The nut, a big nut advantage here, then you go, you get to uh overbet. Now, we have the offsuit sixes, right? Look at all the offsuit sixes we have.
But one thing I would say, Ken, is that I'm finding this to be fairly true. Is that whatever your instinct for Chip EV says to do, bring it down one notch in sizing for the most.
So how I come to this conclusion is I play, I did some toy game work and uh I think I'm starting to get a grasp of it and this is part of it.
Yeah, the difference weren't that big, I mean, it's only twenty uh big ones, a bit more big ones. It's only a small difference.
So if we were deeper, you'd still have overbets here.
Oh, interesting. Just because we have more sixes?
Yeah.
Bit of war.
Okay. Just an easy fold?
I want to fold.
Yeah. Do you call a nine, six of clubs there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good shot. I would call that one.
Should we go to? I wouldn't call clubs just cuz I'm a little tight. If I does call them all, but.
It's a, it's a gut shot to me.
It's a gut shot.
But yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a draw to a nut hand, that's the reason I would call. At least not fold.
Big difference in the raising range. Chip EV will wanna raise a lot, like twenty percent, twenty-two percent of the time. And here it's only. Seven percent.
Oh, I'll pay, but can you go back to the hand with the sixes? Did we have block bets too? But not with that, not with our combo, but like, does the range have block bets? It didn't, right? Now that I think about it, it only had the one big bet size. Yeah. Okay. Oh no, there's some small bets here. Were these kings? Okay, so it does have block bets.
Yeah, the weaker kings, that's it.
So that's like another aspect that um when you have. A real small bet, uh you also have really big bets. You have two buckets. You don't usually have much in the middle.
You zoom past it, but I think we get slivers of leads on top pair pairing two.
And you almost always have slivers of leads, huh?
You gotta fold here, right?
Yeah.
Or call.
I don't think I'm folding here.
Wanna call?
What's not?
Okay. Majority fold though.
Yeah.
Even you the double dribbler, well.
Oh, well, here comes a pop.
Fold, fold.
Do you call a pair of three here when you're mixing?
Yep.
No, I think with the Ace ten, we can start folding some threes.
Yep. Big bet, ace and ten.
Big bet, okay.
Oh, a little five. Oh, look at this. So.
Green man, and still we have to fold.
Okay.
We knew that, probably we have to.
If we remember correctly, having a nice here is bad if you wanna hero call, right? So say we wanna hero this guy right on the bubble. What do we need?
Five, two of hearts.
Nope.
I don't know about that, V.
I think no five can call unless you have two pair.
I think.
I don't think that ten can call.
No ten.
Ten X suited with spades.
Yeah.
Would you rather have Jack seven here or Queen Jack?
Queen Jack.
No, that's close because King Queen is of course bluff candidate. And with King Jack, we block that. Jack seven, I think. But there are, uh, Jack, I would prefer Jack eight or something like that, Jack nine, Jack seven.
Yes, something. Not the Queen Jack, but I think Jack nine, Jack eight make better.
Why Queen Jack is that? Well, I care down.
Because it blocks King Queen, Queen Ja- uh, like uh. The upper combos.
But Queen Jack is pushing it, but I don't think so. Yeah, still Queen Jack's calling.
Queen Jack is good enough.
But is that hearts only or because you have a full uh? That's hearts and clubs on you.
Diamonds too.
Yeah, everyone. Uh, at least Jack nine is calling some. Two pair. Spades.
Yeah, we can't pull two pair.
Queen five and Ace five call.
Cuz we have no sets, two pairs to top of our range.
Hmm.
Queen five off.
Has to be a Queen of hearts, I guess.
Queen space, no.
I'm sorry, Queen of spades, Queen of spades.
Alright, very interesting. Nice little session, everybody. Thanks a lot.